Okay. We'll bring to order the Berlin School Committee meeting of November third. We're working on, or do we even have any payroll in?
Ah, there are no warrants to see these.
Okay.
Signed them all last night.
Yeah. It's a inconvenience of having one meeting and then the other, I guess.
This is true. This is true.
Then the consent agenda has the October twentieth open session meeting minutes. Oh yes, I did read those. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
One second.
Is there anything to be said?
I don't hear anything.
Okay. And all in favor of the minutes of October twentieth, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Communications. And I had one, and I don't know whether you got that this afternoon from me. I sent it late this afternoon. It's an-
Ah, I did.
Okay.
Sorry, I did see it.
Okay, it's an email from Judy Boomen Selectman, who was asking if we, as the school committee, had any objections to the town using the same council as the school committee. So I just wanted to make sure that you had a chance to share your opinions, or-
I have no objections.
-do you have any issues?
No objections.
I don't either, so I don't know that we need a vote, but I think it sounds like we're all in favor of- if the selectmen care to use Deutsch Floriums, then they are welcome to it. Okay. Uh, petitions and audiences relating to items on the agenda. I don't believe we have any. Okay. CPAC reports. It doesn't look like we have a representative here tonight, so I'm- we will pass over the CPAC report. Superintendent's report.
I'm here. Well, I suppose I should comment about the weather, even though it's not on the report, but happy to announce today, this afternoon around three thirty, quarter to four, we put out an all-call notification to everyone that's on the all-call system, which is virtually pretty much everybody that schools. We'll be open tomorrow at all three schools, Boylston Elementary, Berlin Elementary, and Tohato Regional High School. The- talked to the highway department this afternoon, police department, and and National Grid, and we want to congratulate them for getting the, not only the power restored, but having the roads cleared, so we can- we can resume some normal operations, and people can resume everyday, their everyday lives. We did have power back to the school actually a couple days ago, but just the weather, the road conditions were just so impassable that it was just unsafe to have school buses across tho- across those roads. So we're happy to put that back into place. I'm sure everybody will be happy to return. And we'll get underway with the business of education and resume normal life. Everybody was very cooperative, and all my dealings with both towns and highway, police dispatcher, fire, I mean, everyone I spoke with was more than happy to give me as much information as possible. Also Rose Patry from First Student did a really great job too. We did have a couple drivers from both towns that would just ride the bus routes only, just to see- because not every road in town, I mean, just the bus routes only. Just to see, again, you know, one thing is to drive a car down a road, another thing is to drive a major bus down the road and see if that works, so my congratulations to them too. So tomorrow I did in my notice to parent, should caution them though, be patient. Buses may be running, running a little late, so they are coming, just be patient, they will be there. So on the trip in and on the trip, the trip back home. Unfortunately, we've been blessed with some really nice weather since that, that northeastern, and so things are looking up for us right now. Hope the rest of the winter is not too bad, because we're already down four snow days at Tohato and in Berlin, and three, three in Boylston. Superintendent's search process update, I mean, we had a major discussion at the, at the region on this last night, so I think if the chairperson does not mind, I'll make most of my comments more directed toward the public on this, just to inform them, since we've already heard this before. We did contact the DC, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, formerly known as DOE, to ask about critical cert waivers for superintendents for more than one year. The response that we, we did get initially is, is not that, that positive. There's only been three instances in the state where a critical waiver shortage has been granted two years in a row since the inception of these, of these waivers. So what we will do, and what the, the region committee has already approved, and I'm sure the, the Berlin and the Boylston committees also will approve this too, as well as Union Sixty, okay, which, which Nikki also serves on, is to begin the, the collection of information that we need, questions that we need, salary searches, which I will do for the committee, and begin the putting together the whole superintendent search process for an anticipated advertisement date of the end of December, very beginning of January. That is typically the hiring season begins for, for superintendents at that point in time. Also taking into account that most standing superintendents that are in a, in a position generally have in their contracts of, you know, sixty, ninety, sometimes hundred-and-day, hundred, hundred-twenty-day clause in their contracts where they, they cannot leave. So one has to consider that also, and then just how long the time it might take you to, to look for a new superintendent. If a superintendent cannot be found that, that meets the unique skill set that the committee is looking for, then at that point in time, as, as indicated last night, I believe the committee will, would, has already asked if the Chair of the Regional Committee, Ruth Blandon, would begin to make inquiries with Tricia Federico down at DC on applying for a critical shortage waiver. But, and we may speak with Trish even, even ahead of time to make some inquiries on that. All of my sources basically indicates me right now that the odds on granting that would be fairly slim. So it makes sense to go out and do this at, at this point in time. So we will put that all together for the committee, we've already started to do that this afternoon, and hopefully we'll get all that packet of information, the major packet of information out to next week, and then some of these salary things, that takes a bit longer to collect, although we're well underway to doing that, and we'll get some of the salary and benefit packages out too for current superintendents with districts like, like Berlin, Boylston, and, and the region. So that's a major effort, and we'll get that, we'll get that underway. For those who do not know, the final steel beam was laid at Tohato last week. Very nice ceremony, brought the white beam in, all the kids came out, signed the beam, and the faculty, and the school building committee, school committee, some members of the board of selectmen, I mean, anyone that wanted to come by, that wanted to sign the beam, was welcome to come down and sign the beam. So that was then taken over to the, to the site, and the final beam was welded into place along with the typical evergreen tree, which goes on the beam, which is indicative of, of no injuries on the job, and hopefully no further injuries on the job, and a sign of a long life and prosperity for the, for the building and everyone who enters into that particular facility. So very, very happy about that. And then, of course, we are beginning to get involved with the budget season. So we have already set some meetings up at the, at the region to begin the budgets, and we'll be setting them up with the, with the Berlin and the Boylston committees to set up those, those budgets, those budget meetings at, at this point in time. We anticipate a, you know, I'm sure it's going to be another difficult budget year, the economy being, being, being down so much, but we look forward to working with the town fathers, board of selectmen, not to be sexist, but I mean, the generic, the generic town fathers, shall we say. Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee, and of course the Advisory Board to the Finance Committee. I hope I got that right. Okay, so we look forward to, to working with them. So it, it should be an interesting year, and I think it'll be very, very productive. As you know, the primary reason why we're meeting tonight is to go over our warrant articles and to be able to forward those through to the board of selectmen, the Finance Committee, and the Advisory Board to the Finance Committee.
Sounds good.
Is that correct?
Sure.
Chairman, okay. Whomever you'd want me to send them to, we'll all send them. Okay. So I think maybe as a good segue, we-
Absolutely.
-have Ms. Keegan take off on that and describe the, the articles that we're looking at.
Okay.
Ms. Bradley and Joel Baldessari, the head custodian, did work on compiling their list for FY two thousand thirteen capital plan needs that they see at this time for the Berlin Memorial School. And I have forwarded that to you with some estimated costs. It's my understanding, since comprising this list though, that we may need to remove the gym floor resurfacing for some information that we had-
That I shared with Mike this afternoon?
Obtained, yes, that's correct.
And I was gonna bring that up with the committee too, just in the past, we've hoped that the fees would cover the gym floor resurfacing, the fees and donations and whatnot. And also, it does say summer thirteen too, so we still have time to work on donations and fees that would cover this, because I think a few years ago when we asked for money for floor resurfacing, we said we would not be back, we hoped that donations and fees would cover it.
How much is in that account right now?
I don't, I don't know that there is like a separate account for what we've received-
Fees and- And what types of fees?
Rental fees or-
Yes, they would go in a separate, usually it's called a facilities use. You mean, talk about rental of the school facility?
Right, I don't know.
Yes, that would go into a facilities use revolving fund.
Right.
But I don't know at this time how much we have.
Right, and I don't, you probably don't either, do you?
But I'll definitely get that information.
No.
No.
Okay.
So like you said, we do have enough time to take a look at that, and then maybe do some projections too, maybe look at a historical analysis. I don't know how long, or historical trend, I should say, how long you've been receiving facilities use fees, how many years, and then maybe we can kind of base, you know, project out an estimate of what we might be getting and take a look at that.
Yeah, that would be good.
So that certainly makes good sense to remove that, you know, with that, at this time, we certainly have plenty of time to work on it. So if we do remove it from the list, that brings us down to thirty-two thousand seven hundred with the remaining items on there. And we have boiler replacement at sixteen thousand, sound buffer for the cafeteria for three thousand, external building repairs for five thousand.
Can you talk about what those are, Courtney, just in general description?
Yep. That includes replacement, the external building repairs for five thousand, includes replacement of broken gutters, storm drains, light fixtures, power washing, caulking of the building. So it's a number of items there for the exterior part of the building. And a glass partition for the secretary for forty-one hundred dollars, and an amplification system for the kindergarten for fourteen hundred dollars. And we have received, we had received a quote last April regarding a roof survey, and I added a little bit more because of just, you know, for the more time going by, and that's thirty-two hundred. So if you total all of those items, it comes to thirty-two thousand seven hundred.
Okay, what was, was it, is it on this one, the roof repair?
No, it is not. I added that on, because I just happened to have the information.
Yeah, this one's-
Oh, okay. Oh, here we go.
This is the one, yep.
I have it.
So I had added that on at the bottom.
Questions or?
On this list, it says that the sound buffer in the cafeteria has been installed.
That's what it would cost to install it.
Oh, installed, okay.
Would be installed.
We thought maybe it was already done.
We're saying, oh, yes.
And what, what kind of sound buffer are we talking about?
We're looking a lot at, of buffering materials to go up in the top part of the cafeteria. It's really never been finished, it's all metal.
Right.
And because of the floor being tiled, that it, the sound just bounces, and it's so loud in there that it's not only the children in the cafeteria eating during lunchtime, but even when we try to hold training sessions in there, the, the sound is- Yeah, the acoustics are not good, to say the least.
We didn't look at that.
So the sound buffer is whatever materials that they're using, that they can install in that ceiling area, tiles or some type of foam material. They've looked at cloth materials, but we'd also have to consider that with the fire department and that safety. Another option is to, to also put carpeting on the floor in the cafeteria, which has been an option. I know it's kind of like a spaghetti going on the floor, and it's not, doesn't sound too inviting, so- but it is also an option that we could consider, depending on how much we're able to get, to have that finally completed is really what, what it needs to be done.
Yeah, we've had a lot of people, even some sound tech people come in and do a lot of studies and a lot of options, but not a lot of solution.
I actually had one of my staff members who has on her iPad an ability to test sound. It's eighty, eighty-five is the, the maximum that, that people should be exposed to, and it was eighty-eight the other day in the cafeteria, and that's with a whole group of children in there. So it, it can get very loud at times.
And I, I think at the same time that we looked into this previously, Boylston Elementary looked into it. So you may want to just check with them to see if anybody remember. I know they did install something, but I'm not sure that they were very happy with it.
Yeah, is it?
Yeah, and just-
It's a tile floor.
And I, because I think we were considering doing something similar, and then they said they weren't happy, so we didn't. But you might want to, as far as research, that would be probably helpful.
Right, and to make sure that we, we don't get-
Duplicate something that, right.
Duplicate what they had used, or a company that we might not be happy, you know, with, so.
Right. Not sure that, who would remember over there?
Yeah.
Maybe the secretary?
We could check with other schools, too, put out a listserv and, and ask if some of the schools, you know, have been, have done that in the last several years too.
Yeah.
Or maybe even look towards-
That's what I'd recommend, yeah.
Even what they install now when they're building schools, what they do.
Because no matter what information you get from Boylston Elementary, it's going to be old. You know, technology today just, just improved so much, so I think the lists, the listserv, you'd get a much better idea as to what's out there, what works.
I just think it was Dave Malika.
Dave Malika?
I think so.
From Berlin, who may have looked into Boylston's for them?
No, for us, that's-
Oh, they looked into it for us?
Yes, and the sound and that kind of stuff.
We could just check with them.
And the boiler replacement, I'm assuming is to do with the commissioning and those kinds of things, I'm, I'm sure, correct? I mean, there were quite a numerous list of things that were needed to bring the whole HVAC system up to par.
Yeah, the entire HVAC system. Yeah, they're concentrating more on the, you know, the units and the, the-
Courtney and Sue are experts on HVAC now. Makes out the contractor services out elsewhere.
Was there any other questions, the school committee? I think it's great that you're going to do some outside repairs to the building, because they really, it really does need it.
Much needed, even light fixtures that have been broken in the past, or missing bulbs, or bulbs need to be replaced, just incidental types of things, plus it might be power washing of the school, that hasn't been done. It's getting gray looking, and, but, and also the need for caulking of some of those areas, and the gutters replace elbows are broken, and it's just time. I mean, too late to take a look at those things, and so.
So now, is the process that you will kind of keep us updated if you get some different estimates that are higher, lower, whatever?
Yeah.
You'll keep us updated?
Now, can you tell, can you tell us a little bit more about the, because I noticed that when, and thank you for forwarding to me that document that you did.
Oh, yes.
I did receive it at that, that meeting that I went to, to the advisory, Capitol Advisory-
Right.
Or Finance Advisory Committee.
Finance Advisory Committee, yep.
And, you know, it was very helpful. So I didn't know if you could tell me a little bit more about the process as far as, you know, how many years this has been in place, and, you know, what, what you suggest, because you do know the process, and we are, we are new to it, what you would like us to do, you know, going forward?
I, I, I'm, I would say that, you know, we're pretty close to the amount that, what they earmark us for. What they're, they're just trying to keep the communication open, I think, between school and the town-
Oh, sure, yeah.
And what we're looking for. There will most, there is a budget kickoff meeting on November seventeenth at seven thirty PM, it probably will be right here. And they will probably distribute some forms that will be helpful as far as to fill out for these particular items, and it'll give you a space to say why we need these things, and what the estimates are, and so on and so forth.
Yeah, that's the usual right for capital planning, right.
Right. So when we have that meeting, and if, I don't know if you can get them ahead of time from June, Poland, but you may be able to do that. And I think it just gives you some idea of maybe the different warrant articles that we'll be going forward with in, in May. And I think in February, there will be a date where we'll have to actually submit the warrant articles for each one of these items, so.
Okay.
If that's helpful.
No, that's, that's very good, very good to know. And certainly we will report on what, you know, is, is going on and progressing, and any, any updated estimates, you know? We appreciate getting the, you know, the funds to begin with, you know, to work on the school, and certainly we understand that they would like to have an update on what we're doing, what's going on, so.
And where we didn't, we didn't use any of the money, I don't think, last year. I'm, you know, I'm hopeful that, you know, there'll be a lot of support for the things that we're looking for. I think people are looking for us to do some, some of these things.
Well, it's all about ownership, it's all about preventative maintenance, you know, and it will save money.
Which is important.
Insulating the building and keeping the heat in and, and keeping it cool during the, during the warm spring months, so.
Right. And I understand, because we asked for money for commissioning last year, I think it was, or was it the year, but it must have been a year before.
Yes.
And-
Yes, and that's part of that whole, that whole HVAC, and that's very complicated to get into right now, but I'm glad you actually mentioned that with regard to the monies from, I believe it was voted last year for FY twelve. We do intend, I've been working very closely with Judy Boomen, and we do anticipate utilizing those funds to work on those ventilator units.
Okay.
Okay, so that's, which is separate from the boiler here, that's a very large job, and that's that whole-
Right.
Yeah, I think it's been going on and on, but we definitely are, are progressing, and we have some good plans that we're, we're beginning to get some information on, and some figures that are definitely much more reasonable than what we were getting previously, so.
Good.
So we're hoping to, and, and we were planning on utilizing those funds to the, you know, to, to do as much work as we can with that thirty thousand.
Right.
And then we'll have the boiler taken care of too, so we, we will be making a lot of headway over the next year or two.
And I have to congratulate Courtney on the work she did with, and also with Judy, just because that's to go, to Gordy and not that, that Aragrant that, that was there and just causes everybody larger on agitator and migraines to undo it, and-
Right.
But we will, we will tackle that, and we will have that done, even, even this August, trying to wade through what the money was supposed to be spent on. Probably took us two days just to wade through the files, just to find out what was, what was what, so. But now we're, we're pretty, we're on task, and we have a good, a good direction set, so. Thanks, thanks to Courtney.
Okay.
And then also, I did provide to you, and again, in reference to the sheet, the information that you provided to me, apparently on a yearly basis, I don't know again for how long, they have been kind enough to appropriate fifteen thousand dollars to be used for computers and things of that nature. So Paul Mara did put together, and actually he did it for FY thirteen through seventeen, to give you an idea of what he would be spending the fifteen thousand dollars per year on, in other words, what he felt he could purchase. And I hope that's helpful.
He actually developed an entire computer replacement cycle.
That's great.
You know, for the, for the elementary school, you know, over a five, a five-year period, you get a really good look at it in terms of where you would be, you know, at the end of five years.
Yeah, which is good, yeah.
Did he mention how, how does he feel we are right now? Are we, are we sort of keeping up with, you know, the replacement as needed?
That I don't know, I can certainly, I mean, that's a good, good question, and I can certainly, you know, answer some more information on-
I mean, I was just curious if we're behind or if we're-
Where it's been and where we are right now, and, yeah, correct, because this is-
This is helpful though.
Going forward, but it would be good to get a full picture from him on how he feels as far as keeping up with it.
Now, and let's see, this is FY thirteen.
So are there smart boards in every classroom? Not yet, we're still waiting for the first grade and kindergarten classrooms, and also I would like to include them with the special educators in their rooms and specialists as well, because there's a lot of things that can be done now. Thinking of your question, Chris, and the fact that we are moving much more toward technology, and that's in the school improvement plan, and how, and how we instruct students, so I think that's why this is, this is becoming more and more necessary in the classroom, so that the children can learn to use technology in appropriate ways.
Yep. No, I don't see smart boards on here, are you?
I see them for the current configuration.
That's our current configuration, but if you're looking to get more.
Right, we do, um, probably, I guess I'm not sure where he was thinking that money might come from for this coming year. It might have come out of rural schools in the past, and they funded it that way, I'm not quite sure. I think that was part of it, but I, I do know last year I thought he did fund through this, this, the technology portion of the capital plan.
Yes, that's my understanding, is that every year, I don't know for how many years, but he did say, and I know for FY twelve,
Yes.
Fifteen thousand dollars, I believe, available, no?
I don't think last year we did request any technology.
Not for, not for technology, just the thirty thousand?
No, not even the thirty thousand last year.
So that money's left over from even a previous year then?
Right.
Thirty thousand, okay.
We did get smart boards in both years to be able to continue that process.
I wonder if that was rural schools or something, then?
But this administration, this school committee will expend those funds to get that, to get in there, whatever, we won't let it ride for over a year, we'll, we'll move on it.
Yeah, and I did give, I did give you, or send Courtney a copy of the outstanding warrant articles, which-
But I guess what kind of confused me there is that it did say, beginning in two thousand thirteen. That's what I have, on this one that I have here.
Right, oh, okay. That could be the capital plan itself.
Okay.
So this is probably looking forward.
A different list, okay.
Right, and the outstanding, um, warrant articles, there was still, I believe, fifteen thousand dollars that we had requested at town meeting and have not taken advantage of.
But it is still there, is my understanding.
Yes.
That's what I meant a few minutes ago when I said I thought it was fifteen thousand, but I, I assumed it was from FY twelve though, but you're saying it even goes back maybe even before that?
No, I think it was back, because we didn't ask for any warrant articles at all last year. Because the school building. Right? But-
I will look into that and get a status on that.
How are we going to fund those, if we want more? It, it is, is, let's see. The smart boards are only in this, right here, and this is what you have. And is there, is there, did you say there was a need for additional or replacement of smart boards?
For additional, I'm figuring right now how many that would be.
Then that might be considered, it's not replacement technology? To go within the technology, but it could be something that you look for in a warrant article that possibly could be within the thirty thousand? If it's not replacement? The technology fifteen thousand was to keep everything-
Okay, replacement plan. I understand, just saying.
Computer replacement cycle, yeah.
Okay, all right.
And so if you're going to do something new, then, then you may have to move forward with it as a separate warrant article that maybe could be covered under the thirty thousand that's earmarked for Berlin Memorial Improvement.
Okay.
But, you know, it's a decision, I guess, the school committee, if we feel we want to go forward and request additional smart boards, then we, we will. So. Anybody have any other questions, or?
Okay, so we're going to-
If you, if you want, it would probably be good to share this with also the FAC group and whoever else you-
Whatever you'd like to look forward, I would be all happy to forward any information you'd like through, certainly.
Yeah, if anything that would be helpful as far as, you know, budgeting for the town, or, and ourselves.
Okay, and I'll definitely get some more information on the previous funds, and also inquire about the smart boards.
Yeah, we have to ask Paul to give us a, a figure too.
Right. Right, right.
It's not just that installation of them, you know, per boy.
Right.
Right. Carol will have to tell us, tell us that.
Okay. Do you need a vote for us to?
Well, we will, we can do it now, or you can wait till the business items come up, and we'd like to do it. But we need a, yeah, we would need a vote for the school committee approving the, the capital, FY thirteen capital plan currently as presented with the thirty-two thousand seven hundred dollars and the items here, with the exception of the gym floor resurfacing. And we will, of course, redo this, and this is what I'll forward through to those three boards that you had mentioned.
It's up to the committee if you would like to make a motion at this point, or you want to wait until the business items? Maybe we'll wait.
Okay.
Okay. Well, why don't we wait?
No problem, they don't have to take another order.
Time to think about it.
Okay.
Are you all set with your report, Mike?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have to say that topping off ceremony was very nice. I didn't get to stay for them to putting up the beam, but Ruth, did you stay?
I did.
How was that, was that nice?
Exciting, very exciting, as the rain held off, and it was kind of, I don't know, just amazing to see all the kids there, this crane picking up this beam over these kids. It was kind of a little too exciting, and people, but it was, it was just reality slowly sinking in, I, it's very exciting, I think the kids are excited. Some of them, I think, are a little melancholy, the older ones that are like, you know, I don't know if they really want a new building, but I think the younger kids are really excited, it's, it was great, great to have everybody there.
I'm interested to see where the old beam is, and the other- I'm interested to see what the old beam is in the other building, and tear it down.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
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 Tell me, we want to, we want to look at that before you get rid of it.
They want to save it, make a bench out of it.
Yeah, if you can tell what it is, huh?
Where it is, or, to show if the tree is long gone.
Well, actually, uh, I did receive a phone call the other day from Karen Cott, a former school teacher in, uh, in Boston Elementary, whose father, Ken Scott, was on the committee way back when I was here in the day, you know, back in, in the seventies, and he, uh, she actually said, I just discovered I have all these building plans with the Honto Regional High School in my father's attic, she says, would you want them, and I said, well, I said, why don't you bring them over, because Dean Palmero, the, uh, the, uh, head of the chip person of the SBC, he really likes to look at those things, so why don't you bring it over, and maybe we might find the last beam indicated on the, on the charts in terms of where it is, and maybe we can find out. I think it would be kind of neat to get the old, if we could get the old, the old beam, if it was painted with the original signatures.
Right.
I think that'd be.
Oh, yeah, that'd be really neat, yeah.
I think that'd be interesting, you know, how's that someplace, you know?
Could make a tour like, uh, Stanley Cup.
I don't think that's quite as mobile, but.
Wouldn't have to travel far, because we're all in Weston.
Okay.
Okay, uh, let's see, we'll, um, then we'll move on, we've covered the warrant articles, um, the principal's report, Cheryl?
So if we could start with the school improvement plan, um, I want to first thank my school council members for helping me to put this together and giving a lot of their input. We started last year around January using a book called Curriculum Twenty-One that I actually brought, in case anybody wanted to borrow it, it's, um, by Heidi Hayes Jacobs, who is, um, an educational consultant and a number of other educational gurus who are really thinking about what we need to do to prepare our children for, certainly it is the twenty-first century, but our children now for where they need to be in the future when they're graduating from college. So we took a good look at the book and spoke about the chapters, particularly struck us passages and things that we wanted to think about for our children at, at Berlin Memorial. So we use that as our foundational piece, and then we moved into, to creating a plan that I think is, is very manageable and certainly something that we see as achievable in the next two years. If you notice on the, the report, I did set it for two years, for two thousand fourteen, I think in, it's reasonable to have us revisit it next year and see what progress we've made, and then to continue our work for the following year, so I think if, if you're comfortable with that, that's how I'd like to approach this.
That would be great, you know, we'd love to have an update.
So, because we have, the work that we're doing is not overnight kind of, kind of work, we're moving every year toward these goals, but each year is a, a step ahead, um, and, but it's just, it's hard to get to everything and complete it within a year, so I don't know, if you, we can go through each, each page and just look at the focus areas, this is, if you notice, this is another, a new format, and it's actually the same format as our colleagues in Boylston are using as well, so Folko Hinden and I tried to be consistent with that and how we set up our plan. It's also very user-friendly, I think, it gives us our focus areas on top, or the goal of what we're doing, what we expect, our expected outcome, and then certainly the space to fill in for actual outcome when we get to that point. Um, down at the bottom, we have the approach, the action steps that we're gonna be taking, the point people, the start date, the target completion date, um, any outcome data we might have, and then finally the status that we can bring back next year as a simple checkoff to what we're trying to achieve. The first page is around teaching and learning, we do, since we have, um, had the training on standards-based education, we're certainly looking to continue to, um, work with that approach and, uh, work in the classrooms with teachers and with students to be mindful of things like essential understandings. What is the big picture understanding that children need to know as they move through the grade levels, so that it's not just teaching for the moment, but teaching outward, teaching, um, in an ongoing way, so the children are able to make connections in their learning. Um, it's, it's put, so if you come into our classrooms now, you'll notice in the classroom boards are around the classroom, you'll see big, the big ideas posted, so during each unit, the teachers will identify, here's why we're teaching what we're teaching, um, and they're also including that in their lesson plans to me as well each week, where they're citing the big ideas in each content area. So we're, we're making progress with that, and certainly I think the children are beginning to catch on as well and really seeing as they move through each grade level, oh, I remember we did this in the grade before, or two grades before, but now we're doing it in a more sophisticated way. So, so that's a piece that we're working on with teaching and learning, um, are there any questions with that page? Our second page certainly is what we talked about last time I was here, just a few short weeks ago, and that's our work around Common Core standards, and, uh, that is coming down the pike for us very rapidly, this year we're focusing on kindergarten, first and second grade implementation of the Common Core standards for Massachusetts. And actually Massachusetts has its own set of frameworks, which takes in the Common Core and adds their own standards as well, so, um, that, that's the piece we're making sure is going into the curriculum areas for us. And then the following year, by two thousand fourteen, we'll have all pre-K through sixth grade with Common Core standards, and this is actually the first time they've had pre-K standards, in the past we've had K through twelve, but now we've included pre-K in the state. The next page again is the two, as I said, two, a couple of weeks ago, we were talking about academic performance, we have not let the MCAS results go, um, uh, by the wayside, and certainly our AYP status, although some things have changed around the state and the federal government, this, this country as a whole that might, might, might want to speak to, but we are certainly mindful that we do want to improve our scores at MCAS. We feel that we are capable of doing that, and we're really looking, um, by grade level, at ways that we can make those improvements, sometimes it's, um, you know, it could simply be making sure that we're addressing particular units before the testing takes place, sometimes it's reviewing with children who need more reteaching skills, and we're working on that, and we're also looking at just continuity through the grade levels and the language of that, what we're using, and sometimes just working on test-taking skills. And I think I talked about that last time, just getting children to know how to approach a test, how to take the test and how to utilize tools that they have, strategies that they know and skills that they know in an independent way, because in the classroom they're very, it's, it's, it's easier for a teacher to support children, of course, that's what they should be doing, but when you have to leave them on their own, are they able to sustain what they know, are they able to have the stamina to go forward, and, and what's, very challenging testing settings, I mean, it's very isolating for the children, they're on their own, and, um, it, it's, can be kind of intimidating for them, but, but they're working hard on that, and I hope we see some, I, I expect to see some improvement in the next two years, and I think my staff does too, I think they're very committed to, to working on that this pa, this year. The next page certainly is our social and emotional well-being of our school community, we have, um, had training, uh, already in one of our, uh, professional development sessions on PBIS, the Positive Behavioral and, positive behavioral interventions and support system, I do have an advisory committee, um, or, I shouldn't say I have it up and running, I did meet initially with some of my staff members who are interested in participating on that committee, and we are looking for parent, um, a parent representative as well for that, and we're moving forward, um, considering what, what, what our first priorities in the school areas, um, getting a commitment around our core values and looking at those, the language of them, if you see in the front of the school improvement plan, our core values are listed, and they've been in place for a number of years, but what the staff has recognized is they're not always student-friendly, our little ones have a hard time really understanding what do these core values mean, so we're looking for ways to perhaps create the same core values, but in a, a much more kid-friendly, with much more kid-friendly language, particularly for our younger students, and that's gonna be important, and we're looking for ways to really promote the core values in the school, make them very visible, not only at, actually at our school, but in the community as well, at some of our merchants, some, and some of our churches, and just other areas where we can, um, community centers, that we can show that these are our values in the school. And, and as I said, looking at certain things that we really need to, um, address matters of discipline and the approach that we take in, in disciplinary issues, the teachers do have, um, logs in their classrooms that they're using weekly, and they do, um, share those with me every week, they turn those in, so I can see patterns of behavior, um, and those are documented with particular students, um, and they have forms that they're filling out of their incident reports, so we have a better handle on, on, um, on the data, we collect data about what's happening in the school and particular target areas, ways we can address, um, those needs. We also included in here, you know, I mentioned, um, that had come up last year about adult bullying in the workplace, and that's certainly something that we want to, um, address as well, how, and that's very important for me, that, for my staff, and I've talked with them about respectful community, and thinking about how we talk with one another as adults and modeling that for our children as well. So we do have, um, Elizabeth Englander coming to us December ninth, I believe it's Friday, February.
Sounds like the right day.
Sounds like the right day, um, and she is going to be speaking about bullying, this was the presentation we were going to have at the beginning of the year, but the hurricane, put that one away, so, um, hopefully we will have a other, another, ninth, another natural disaster, um.
September ninth, twelve thirty. Did you say, did you say what?
Uh, another natural disaster for that, I think we, we have our share, our fill now, we've.
Well, I don't know if you were saying that, a positive or the negative word.
We're positive about it, because I think we've had our fair share now, and I think we hopefully are done, I keep telling staff, we're gonna have a really nice winter now, because we've gotten this out of the way in October, so, so, um, so anyway, that's, that's the piece we're looking at, um, for our students, and, um, certainly at the adults in our, in our school community. Um, our next page is communication, when I came into Berlin, um, this was a huge issue that kept appearing, um, in parent surveys, and I think we've chipped away at this through the years, um, and are trying to really get better communication out there, I think this has been, um, certainly, um, our, our friends at BUS are very, um, supportive of and helping us try to get information out to the community, we've been sharing things now, um, this year, thanks to Mike and, um, and Diane Terceri over at Tohonto, sending things to me to send out in my newsletter as we get them, which you'll see this week, a couple of things are coming out, which are really good news pieces about our children at Tohonto, and then our Massachusetts children in general, our students, so that should be coming along tomorrow. The other piece we wanted to do is talk, uh, get into the newspapers more, um, what's happening at our school, getting more PR, and I was fortunate to have, um, um, Irina, I'm gonna say her wrong, I'm blanking on her last name, because I'm looking at it, I can't think of it, she is a LINK, uh, parent, and she's our vice president, and she is our PR person, Drogie, Drogie, and she, um, is, has really been great about making sure that, that, uh, she writes articles to the press and contacts them when we have events, so we're really grateful to have somebody step up and work on that for us, because we have a lot of wonderful things that go on at Berlin, next week we have our Veterans Day present, uh, celebration or assembly, that's very, uh, powerful, and, um, we certainly would hope that the, that the newspapers will be there and be present, um, for us, and also just things like our Thanksgiving play we have the following Thursday, we'd love, love to get some press on that, so our kids are cute too, in the paper. Especially in the other towns, and I do want to see that in there, because I do want to honor the good things that work, that are happening. We also, obviously, we've been doing a lot with student enrollment in school, bringing school choice children in, since we have twenty-five, twenty-six and counting coming into our school, um, apparently Berlin is the place to be, because they're sending the message out and they are coming, if you ask for it, they will come, and they're coming, to this, today, we have another request to come into our school, um, so since I saw you last week, I think we've added three new students, so we're, we're happy about that, um, what else? And just getting local businesses and corporations involved with us and making donations where they can, we have a lot of folks in the community, they are connected to corporations who might be able to assist us in with some of, some of funding or some, some items that we could be using in the school. And our final piece is technology, and it, it ties into what we were talking about with the smart boards, and really just bringing to the table, uh, as much as we can, the latest technology to assist our students, um, certainly, um, one of the pieces that we're interested in and, um, is tracking student information in the schools and, and, and getting software so that we can better, um, find out about student learning and, and follow specific, you know, follow individual students through the years, so that we're not scrambling to put together a piece here from one teacher and a piece there from another teacher, that it's all in one place, and then we can, if we need to, um, do any interventions with the child, that we have a pattern of their learning through the years, so that is one piece, and then certainly adding more mobile, more laptops to the mobile carts, um, as those move around from classroom to classroom, children do read a lot more research, um, Tricia Anderson has been, uh, incredible about teaching children how to do presentations in the library, I mean, we've moved, since now the, uh, the equipment is in there, um, it's much more accessible for them to doing research projects through, um, they're, they're doing, um, PowerPoint presentations and, uh, a lot of different, um, we have a, a school, uh, news, a broadcast, um, every couple of weeks, um, with children from the fifth grade as the, as the broadcast specialist, so it's very exciting, and we know that we can do more with that, and, and I see it as not, and certainly the school council didn't see this as frivolous learning, it's really important to the world that they're going into, when in fact they're not using paper and pencil in colleges anymore, they're on blogging with one another and, um, and all of their coursework, doing a lot of online coursework, and, uh, and that's what, what they need to learn, it's, it's, some of our, you know, we're, we're not there, but our children are, to be honest, so a lot of times if I don't know how to do something, I go to the kids.
Yeah.
Either the students or my own children, and say, how do you do this, so, um, and they'll, but very quick they teach you how to do it, so, I think that's it. So that's our school improvement plan, and I wanted to share that with you this evening, so that you'll know, and I'd be happy to bring this back again next year for review, and to give you an update on what we've been working on.
Very well done, Carol, I mean, I, I like the way you have it set up with the, with the point persons responsible, people, your start date, your target completions, when I read it through a few days ago, and, and also the status, the people on board on it, so it's very well, very well organized, very well organized.
Anybody have any questions for Carol? I, I think it's great that there is a piece for communication, I think sometimes we take, take for granted, because we're all sort of within the school commi, community, that even people out there don't have kids in the school, it's nice to keep them informed too, some way, shape or form, you know, even if it's just a little bit now and then, um, and, and especially as, as you've talked about, and I think we talked about it, the region, where, um, we're trying to get, get the elementary school parents informed about Tohonto.
Yeah.
And, you know, what to expect, and, um, you know, the great things that are going on there.
And that, and that, those efforts are paying off, because I know, because when I go down to the bus stop, a couple times a week, bus stop, times a week, and.
Mm-hmm.
That's where you find out.
That's where I find out, everyone's there, and, uh, you'd be surprised, the parents in first, second, third grade say, oh, I saw on this site that now you have a national semi-amer, when, uh, woo, impressive, impressive, or the MCAS scores were, you know, in the ninety-seven percentile, oh, I didn't know that, you know, so, you know, put, you know, put it out, people, people don't know, and the LINK webpages is, is nice, you know, I read it, it's very, very nice.
Bus stop's a place to be.
That's where you really find out.
Yeah, well, I don't miss being there.
Do we, do we need a vote for this, or?
This is, no, really, the, uh, the school improvement plan is really a function of the school council and the credibility principle, but it is required that the school improvement plan be presented to the committee, so the committee, uh, accepts, just formally accepts the, formally accept, vote to accept the plan, okay, but it's not really an approval plan, you're going to accept the plan.
Yeah, it used to be, and now, then it wasn't, and then, I think they're working on trying to get it back or something, but, you know, I think, as you can see, I, we're not questioning a lot of things, and I think there's support here for you.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and I look forward, I look forward to hearing about it again next year and what we've accomplished.
As I said, I have a wonderful school council, we've had a couple of folks graduate to Tohonto now, but, um, but we, we have new folks in place, and I think they'll bring another dimension of, um, knowing what we need to do, to go forward.
And more enthusiasm, you need that turnover.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's go to, yeah.
It's been, it, yeah, it's been a very positive experience, I enjoy meeting with them, and certainly my, my LINK people, who I, um, that, our meeting was canceled tonight, which enabled me to get over here on time, so, um, we're missing every, each other, you know, it's been, it's been a tough time.
Sharpening up their chainsaws, I'm sure.
Yes, yes, I have been getting updates from, um, one of my LINK folks.
Wanted to give a round of applause to the, uh, people in the parking lot, all the National Reserve people.
Oh, I did, I went up to them.
Did you?
Yes, I did. Yesterday I probably would not have, but today I am.
I stopped too, to thank them for our school up and running again, so. Um, a couple. I stopped to thank them for our school up and running again. So, a couple of quick things about events coming up. I did mention the Veterans Day program. That's Thursday the tenth at one thirty. And then also, we have our annual Thanksgiving play performed by our second graders at one thirty on Thursday, November seventeenth. And I do also want to mention, well, we have no school for Veterans Day on the eleventh, which everyone was, who we have school? I mean, it's interesting what folks are saying. Do we, are we out again, really? But certainly, we do want to honor the veterans and it's not disrespect to them. It's just we can't believe that we're coming up yet to another day.
Right.
Off. Um, that being said, uh, LINK, um, is postponing, we had a movie night scheduled for tomorrow night, and that we're postponing to a later date. We have, we don't know yet. We have to sit down. And speaking of that, um, most importantly, we did have parent-teacher conferences scheduled for this Wednesday. Um, we obviously will had to cancel that. We are looking to reschedule that in the near future, but I do want to speak with my staff and make sure that we're all kind of, we have a consensus about a date for that. But we do need to have those conferences. It's important. There's a lot of information that the teachers do want to share with parents, and and they do have it up and ready to go. Um, so, we're we're going to just talk at our staff meeting on Tuesday, and I'll I'll certainly get back to Mike to share that information with you.
So, share that with you.
Okay. Sounds good.
And that's my report. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
All right. We're back to capital requests to the Board of Selectment.
We do need a formal vote on that.
And we do need a vote to support the capital plan requests.
The vote actually would be to afford the to approve and afford the capital, um, the schools' suggestions for capital plan for as a warrant article to the to the Board.
To the boards.
To the boards. You should the Board of Selectmen, but the to the whatever.
Yep. So, do I hear a motion?
No, no.
Someone wrote what he said.
Okay. Is there any, is there anything else you want to discuss? That was the, um, this particular list.
For thirty-two thousand seven hundred dollars.
Okay.
Boiler replacement for sixteen thousand. Cell block for cafeteria for three thousand. External building repairs for five thousand, uh, which, uh, Muskegon outlined what those were. Last partition for the secretary for forty-one hundred. Amplification system for the kindergarten for fourteen hundred, and roof survey for thirty-two hundred. That is thirty-two seven, right?
Yes.
Okay. Just want to make sure. Okay. For a total of thirty-two thousand seven hundred dollars.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Sure, Bill.
What happened to the boiler? That's the first I've heard of this.
We've had, uh, we've had some commissioning of the HVAC system that Judy's been working on through the the ARRA grants through the federal government. And they came back and said that these are all the things you need to do to get the HVAC up and running properly. I think one of them is is included is the replacement of the boiler. Is that correct?
That I don't, to be honest with you, I've been holding the pulse on the ventilator to, you know, as far as my focus.
We haven't heard about that.
But he did add this as a, um, an item that needed to be done. Whether it was included in what I've been focusing on, it's been just those ventilators.
So, it's not one and the same. It's sort of, um, sort of two different things.
I think I believe it's two separate things.
Okay, okay, gotcha.
I think we need to know when is, why we need it before you go on to any money work.
Oh, well, we will have to back it up before we vote to put it on the warrant article in February. Um, and that's what I've asked is that they'll continue to keep us updated on the things and why we need them and so on and so forth. Um, but I knew we did have a design issue with the boiler at one point already, and I don't know how that's.
Yeah, I mean, we will have to develop, obviously, a rationale for each one of these to be presented to the to the FinCom.
Like you said, it's part of the process.
It's part of the process, yeah.
And forms and right, right.
Right.
Yeah.
Because they'll need to set a priority up on what they want to put on the capital planning for the town.
Yep. Okay. Any other questions?
The only thing I just want, at the next meeting, I hope we just can get an update on how many, um, what the funds are for the floor for the for the gym.
Oh, yes.
That we have available. So, if we can get that information at the next meeting, that would be great.
Yeah, I've written that down.
If there's anything in the separate fund, is that what you're asking?
Mm-hmm. In the in the amount.
Yeah.
Yes. Yes, I had written that down. Yeah, I definitely want to find that out too.
Thank you.
Yeah, for that employee servicing.
Okay. Um, I just want a quick question for Carol. The amplification system for the kindergarten, I'm assuming that might be the last of all of these amplification systems?
Yes, that's what it is.
Because I didn't know whether we had completed that round of trying to put them into, you know, each of the classrooms.
Right. What I was unaware of is the other kind, it wasn't a kindergarten classroom at the time. I think that's what had happened. It was, um, at the time was PT and OT. Um, that room is now being utilized as our second kindergarten classroom. So, that's why we wanted to get that system in place there.
Okay. That's probably important because I think they they may have thought that that was it for the amplification system. So, you might want to just be able to.
Yes, that's what, that's actually what it was, that did become a classroom. So...
Okay. So, we had a motion and a second. If there's nothing else, then we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Um, move on. And this would be to, you know, of course, to forward to the floors and whatnot. Because you said that, you made the motion.
Yes. You'll forward it to, talk, we'll forward to the three boys.
Right. So, we'll move on to the social, social networking policy, which we approved for a first read at the last meeting. And do we hear a motion to approve for a final read?
So, second.
And is there anything else you have to talk about? If not, just vote for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Um, I think we did an extensive sort of a conversation last night about the school meeting dates for the remainder of two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve. And where's my paper?
It was extensive.
And I did, I think these are the right dates. For Berlin, the next meeting, I'm assuming is December fourteenth, unless that's an issue for anyone. We're going to stick with the one that's on this particular.
Right.
Yeah, we'll have it again. We'll have the fourteenth and then the fifteenth at the region for Ruth and I. And then, is this second, twenty-second a possibility or is that a definite for the region?
These dates are right, yeah. I don't think these dates are, and I don't think the dates you have in front of you have been corrected.
Yeah, these were.
No, I I changed them.
Oh, okay.
So, is that, is that correct? I think the fourteenth was still on for Berlin.
Yeah, it was three nights a week. I remember we had thirteen, fourteenth, and fifteenth, I believe.
Berlin on the fourteenth at seven o'clock is what I have listed here. So, that is right.
I, yeah, I don't remember which one it was.
That one's still good?
Yeah, that's good.
For Berlin, I just had crossed out the twenty-first and made it the fifteenth or the twenty-second for the region.
That's correct. That's what I remember.
That is correct, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Twenty-first is Boylston.
I didn't know if we could look, we want to wait till January or December to look at January for Berlin or at the region or?
Well, I definitely want to get December fourteenth. Well, I tell you, this January second budget submission is is really, really tough.
Well, you know, my advice for that is if we are able to get it in by like the second week of January, if you were to write a letter and to request that from the selectmen in the FinCom that you, you know, be able to have a meeting before you final, your final submit submissions of the butter, butter, the budget.
We'll make cheese.
But, I mean, I I think they've been, they've been pretty good as far as we know. We need one more meeting in January, the beginning.
I just had you have you see the budget one night and then discuss it all in one night because I'm sure you'll have questions and you may want further research on something.
Maybe just ask for permission to submit it after the fourteenth of January for Berlin. And it, and if they respond otherwise, um, then we'll have to come up with a meeting date.
Yeah, it's a very, as, as you know, in our discussions, we know with the advisory board to the finance committee, it's, um, is a very, very early budget. I mean, we have no idea what chapter seventy is. They have no idea what lottery is.
They they do realize.
Highway, I mean, there's.
And then twenty-second.
Yeah.
But it's some, it's by law that no one has ever changed. So, we just try to do the best we can.
Oh, it is.
It's a town by law.
Okay.
So, um, and I think we've actually been doing better in the last few years than we had years and years ago.
We certainly do better than the state, that's for sure.
Yes.
Yeah, they have their own laws too, and they submit it when they, when they want, causing us causing us all a lot of budget to, yeah.
So, I mean, it looks like we'll plan for December fourteenth and not, and then the January eleventh we'll most likely stick with and have, after that, maybe we can, you know, we can let them know that we can submit the Berlin budget anyway.
Okay.
If we need January to look at it again.
Perhaps as a letter, I might, I might draft shortly for the chair and myself to sign just so. And it's also coming from, you have the blessing of the school committee on this too. I think it's not a nice, a nice thing. Did I say that right?
You want to blame us. That's, no, no, I'm just kidding.
No, 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 no. I have no, no agenda, no hidden agendas.
I know. And it is. It's very difficult to get it in that early.
Yeah, it is, yeah.
Um, so, let's see, public school committee comments. I just, I mentioned the budget kickoff meeting on November seventeen. That's at seven thirty, and that most likely will be here. I'll send any information if I get it from the FAC. I'll forward it to you.
Great.
Then if you're available, you can make it. That'd be great. And is there any other public or school committee comments? Nope. Okay. Future agenda items?
Just for the budget.
Oh, absolutely. And the, and the fee update.
Okay.
That's right, the fee update.
Yep, facilities use fee update.
Right, mhm. Um, yeah.
Those would be two big ones.
Right. So, I think we do have need for an executive session to discuss strategy with respect to litigation.
Yes, we do.
Um, do I hear a motion to go into executive session, not to return to open, open session except to adjourn?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Roll call vote. Nikki?
Aye.
Ruth?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks, Ray.